How can we do that, Mr. City?
Well, the headway building permits was early November before we even rezoned the new places over there in Home Edition. So we caught that business print last month.
Oh, sure.
The way he's missing it. Somebody's got to do the same.
I'm the only one in the city that served by in soils and aggregates and concrete and small water pollution prevention. The only one in the city that's fault by to do that kind of stuff. I have zero input on any of that stuff.
Okay, so how do we get to where you have more input?
Well, I think we're doing it on some type of checklist, but I don't think it should be just a check. I think it should be initial or something that.
Well, the fire team goes and expects even for their fire stuff in the new building. Why don't the street director go check new streets when they're being built?
Well, it goes through in terms of subdivision approval. It's approved by each of the department heads and they have to sign off on it before it comes.
We're talking about where it may actually be built. If a building inspector goes out and expects those homes being built, that subdivision doesn't. Supposed to.
I mean, you get a bond on these streets, right? When they, when they do this stuff. Who inspects that determines whether.
I did see a bond.
We, we used to do it. We, we used to have to do it.
I thought we were working with this conversation a couple of months ago, as Bob was never right, about getting a kind of a detailed organization. Because we got a lot of things that go past each department and that's why I thought we were talking about getting something to where all of them had to sign up before. We've done personal maintenance issue or.
Or supporting.
Well, that applies to commercial and streets and stuff like that to residential houses. We haven't been going through the same process because there's houses that we haven't built since I've been here that I'm not aware of.
That's right. The fail and I'll, and I'm not trying to send any of the bus here because he's not here, but the failure and it's my fault for not allowing it to continue so far, it seems like. But the, we have department head meetings when there's a, when there is a, especially commercial, when there's a commercial business coming in or, or alpha packaging adding onto their park or building a new parking lot, we have a department head meeting and all those department heads are in there. They are sitting and listening to whoever it is, whether it's a tri-pleasure or proposing or whatever. So we go through that process and then it kind of gets lessened, I think, as we go down the line. And everybody know, you know, we have planning director, then we have building inspector. I don't think, in my mind, and I haven't approached it yet, I'll have to, need to, going to, is that the building inspector, one, has to go out and lay hands, if you will, on those houses. And I don't know that he's, I don't know how much of that's getting done. Certainly the streets and we haven't built any, I mean, no subdivision has come in in a while, so we gotta address that for sure. But now that he's here, I can assure you that if subdivision comes in next week, next month, or two months from now, after the planning department commission gets through with it, he would be the one going out. We have somebody in place.
Well, I think, I think you're exactly right. Like we talked about, it would just be a little bit lack of to get the cash in instead of the department is because some of the department heads are a little bit tied about and some are a little loosey-goosey. So I, I ain't sure if some of them do their jobs a lot better than others.
Right.
And as department heads and some of them, one of them does a good job and, and I know there's a lot of. I've heard it from people that have had, that have gone to Barnum, go to Sunny and Dawn and got any, got any little information or however you want to put it. And then somebody else comes in and asks them, well, or asks them, why they're missing anything, you know, they're doing it. But you're required to do this. Well, they said inactive. You get a lot of that miscommunication along and we've, we've started.
Isn't this why cities have a civil engineer?
They would help. Sure. And to answer more specific, you're talking about that house, I'm very familiar with that house, but I won't look at it.
Because the civil engineer's not going to be an inspector on project area.
But you get somebody to start the process.
Well, I mean, for a city our size, if it, what, what I'm getting at is a qualified person to do these inspections.
There is.
Yeah. Does. He just goes back to Deerwood. Right? We built Deerwood and then we went in and rebuilt all roads and we rebuilt all.
And then it began.
It's just like this, if I'm going to put a subdivision tomorrow, I'm not coming, I'm not coming to sign. I'm going to go to the planning department, it's going to start there. Well, it needs to go from the planning department to the fire, to the police, whatever it's got to do.
Which is, by the way, what we talked about.
Right, that's what, that's what I'm getting at. But it starts, period, in the story in planning and, and it's just.
But there, there are two bases to that in terms of.
For some starts in planning.
It comes to planning department, it comes to the commission and we approve the preliminary plan and then we refine a plan or something. But that's all plans and paperwork that I, all those department heads look at and everything is to code, it's a standard and so on. Where they're falling down is as it's being built. How are we accepting it? Is it, was it built to the standard that was approved by the city and approved by the council?
There's absolutely no doubt whatsoever that this house he's talking about up there would have been built on this and it's falling apart or going to fall apart. That we, the city, and I'm such a cluey bee, went up and did a, what would be an action test or whatever it is. Yeah, I mean, I, I, anybody that lives within a few miles from that probably knows that somebody brought in the dough, they're cleared it off, leveled it and then built a house on it, two houses on it, so.
Yeah, and that's bad, but we, the city, don't necessarily have exposure in that. Right? I mean, that's bad that it happened.
We don't have.
It's poorly done.
But we do have responsibility. That's why we.
Well, I mean, we're not going to have to pay to fix the happen.
No, 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 no.
So we're going to have to pay.
We're talking about that, right?
But we have a code enforcement department to try to enforce codes.
Right.
But to try to make sure when you buy something, it didn't go burn down or fall down on you. And that's like those bridges back, like you talked about back in the day. I don't think the standard was quite like that we're requiring now in the thought process that we go.
I'm just saying, we, we need to have more formal process where people ink their names.
Yes, sir.
So when Simon comes in here and says, things falling apart, and I say, it's 12 years old, we pull out the document, you sent it, you said it was good.
Well, that's what I was getting at, well, go, do we have the people qualified to inspect things? To protect our neighbors? The cost of that employee would have been cheaper than the cost of new bridges and new roads. Is what I'm getting. Man, we have to.
I think we have some, I think we have.
It's perfect. You know, and that goes back to my conversation. I, I said, and I'll say it again in case everybody didn't hear, when Sonny retires, I want to have a long conversation about how we organize that department and, and how he's replaced. I want to have a conversation. So if Doug goes out and hires somebody, I'm probably going to be the one that overturns it. Because I want to have a conversation.
I don't want to say anything bad about Sonny. I don't want Sonny to go anywhere, but if the department is unstructured right now and it's costing us money to fix it, we don't need to wait for anybody to retire.
Yeah, you can restrict it, I think, I mean, you can, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I, I, I'm not trying to throw Sonny out the back of the horse.
And now would be the time to have your discussion on what you want the credential qualifications to be to replace, to fill that job for the next person who goes. Now would be the time to have those on the books.
But still, I think, you know, like I said, planning does their thing, you know, and they approve the preliminary plan that.
The planning commission as opposed to the planning department.
But I'm thinking, yes, but I'm thinking when it gets time to issuing finally the certi- certificate of occupancy.
Right.
I think that's when, you know, you say, was it done all in accordance with what the planning, you know, approved on the preliminary? You know, and we, we should not issue that certificate of occupancy unless, like I said, everybody has signed off. Has signed off on it.
Basically, you've delayed your sidewalks.
At that point in the construction, you're too late. You need to do it at the subgrade level, at the foundation level, at the.
And they're way, sure. And that's all they.
More stuff, roof, et cetera.
Well, that's right. I mean, that's all, whenever you're pointing, when you expect now, it's.
It's just because they endorse.
That's exactly right. It's got to be enforced.
Whereas, back to the point, if that's not being done now and it's not being done correctly, we need to figure out how to put people in place to do it, right?
I think a lot of bridges, because I've been going back 20 years or so.
Sure.
Those bridges shouldn't be failing soon.
They certainly failed, but the city at that time had one wonderful example.
I've done that with ordinance, so you can take off on that. Tim wants it. Tim wants it?
It's not called yet.
He wants that call. That's not.
You know, we got 97% of it.
We got the ordinance. I'm not looking at the ordinance.
Remember where it was 20 years ago on these bridges? It's on 20 years ago, we had one person in the planning department, wasn't a planning department, we had a building inspector. That was one person at, at that time, you know, our street department of the city.
It was us and the guy running the water.
Yeah, so 20 years ago, 40, go back 40 years.
We're getting better and better every day, just we're getting paid. Part of the growing base, we have to kind of make up for the, for errors of the past and this is kind of one of those. Anyways, with the, with the cost of this is going to be more than what I budgeted for the year, for my street grant is budgeted. So I wanted to see if you guys wanted to give me permission to go ahead and fix these deficiencies and ask for resolution afterwards.
No.
Because I don't know what the cost will be. Well, if we do it in-house, it's going to be a, you know.
Still, you're going to have to figure, sit down and figure out a cost. Rather than spend money and do a resolution afterwards.
You want me to just put it up? Did? Throw that to you? It's going to be really expensive.
I'd say do it, do it in-house, but I'm thinking you, you approach everyone, you do your, your best guess on your first one. You know, I mean, your best guess is going to be far better than my best guess. And then the second one, you'll be able to improve upon your guess because you had experience doing that first one.
They're all different.
The thing about it is you got to figure out the downtime. And he's going, it's going to have to pull off, you know, same, I mean, that's, that's the time, the time of the essence is on that. I mean, you go out there, you take metal, metal bridge, for example, and you take that bridge out, you know how many people cut through there?
A ridge do it half the time.
You know, so I mean, I don't know if it's going to be, if it'd be feasible for him. I don't say they can't do it, they did a great job on this and down here.
Yeah, on Bell Road, right.
But timeline, if, if it's, if it's out of whack for six months, you know, or a year or whatever, less. And somebody come in and do it and expense that time, whatever, I mean.
Well, they're going to say Bell Road is.
There's still, they can carry their primary, you know, job that they have to do.
What I was planning on doing with the metal bridge itself is tear down, have our, my crew tear down the wing walls, tear, tear down one side of it and then hire the, the crew that does the sidewalks for us to come build the new wing walls because we don't have the forms to build those walls. Have them build the new wing, wing walls, new parroted walls and hip walls for those boxes. And then switch over to the other side, build the wing walls, hip walls.
That would, that would, you're leaving boxes in, right?
I remind you, we paid a million dollars to contract for that subdivision. And people's here for that.
Tell us the city council.
Before I voted, by the way, I was. But the cost of non-performances is really high.
I'm going to say, who made me a chairman? I'm going to say, six, nine, six. It would be exactly, we had that about a year ago. That was a little low.
I, I, just to put the perspective, how many bridges per pound would be detected?
Right now, I've got, um, I can't, I think there's three right here that I've just received the email on.
How many bridges per pound?
I don't know.
I just looked, without the state, 22% of the bridges in the state are substandard.
Yeah, where, where's, as a city, where are higher percent?
Yeah, so if we're, if we're at three, four or five bridges out of all the bridges we have in town, we are far ahead of the state of ours. So we, we.
Three to five.
We can do better, but we are. Could be worse.
I don't know what the highway standards is, um, I don't have a list of what they've identified as a bridge length structures in the city. Because I would think the stone bridge would be a bridge because it's culverts. But if they have it, this is a bridge length surgery, so. You know, I don't, I don't have enough on that. But these, these.
What was your price of the cost on, on Bell Road here?
On to do those, I think that was 15 grand, but that's way smaller than any of these. These other, these other, uh, stone bridge, those are 48 inch culverts, two of them. Stone, stone bridge is three 90 inch culverts. I've never in my life installed a 90 inch culvert, that's huge. And, you know, I, I don't know why they put 90 inch culverts in there. You know, that one, I would think that the boss said, but, you know, that's what they did.
You got any good news?
Sidewalks.
Tell them.
Yeah, we're also working on some sidewalk stuff.
I heard our sidewalk.
So I did talk to Halton Sollier about the Center Street. They're supposed to have me some information by today, but I don't have any information. So, um, didn't quite make it.
None of that.
Didn't kind of go into them anymore.
You're hoping maybe this week and.
Probably next year for all I know. It just doesn't seem like I'm getting pretty much stuff done. Actually completed, I think I'll, I'll be sure to call tomorrow. I'll tell, tell them I noticed please I have, because I was hoping to have some on Center Street all the day. But we are, I think we're getting ready to put some sidewalk in Denver Street. Depending what we need to do on these, if I need to start working on these bridges, then, you know, this is going to take some work out.
Well, I, I would like to see you prioritize, you know, which bridge you think is the, the worst one, you know, that's going to need to address first.
Well, the first one that I must tackle is, I think I want to, I've already been working with the contractor about replacing the wing walls on, on metal bridge. I want to get those done and get that done back, once they get those walls back in there and rebuilt like they're supposed to be. I get it, we excavate out like one lane at a time, backfill the flowable select and plate it and at least keep traffic on it. Do the other set of lanes, backfill it, I think with them on the impact of the traffic. So I'd like to get that done. Stone bridge is another beast in itself because it's the only way in and out of that area. So if people are living there, that's the only road they have to get in and out of there. So we're going to have to tear down half of it and build it to it and then tear down the other half and go along out.
I can't believe we're missing this game.
Thirty six, three seconds left, thirty six.
Oh, we missed it.
I know, I was thinking, you were talking about bridge, were, was it branch later on or something?
We did, we did a bridge.
Where is that?
Why are you not naming those bridges?
Smucker Bridge.
The one that's rolling in right there?
Okay, so, all right, I'll try to help you out. The sidewalk on Denver Street, Simon went out and looked at too, was from continuing on from McWhorter's property on that same side of the street. We had a pretty good shot at it. I know we went out once before a couple of years ago and looked at it, it was like everybody was freaking out that that couldn't work, but we only found one little area.
I think we're going to switch back to fourth on Denver. I'm going to go along a little bit, crosswalks down on the yard.
I mean, it can be done, so there, there's a good section.
Done for next month.
If it's not the perfect weather, it'd be more concrete.
Let's just start turning up like the signs. We're going to get some sign first.
Yeah, we get the sign first, but that, but we think that can be done.
Are we just required to have a sidewalk run along Denver or is it just?
No, that's just one particular place that, and, and that has been brought to our attention several times by some more than one person. There's a lot of kids that walk there.
What I'm saying is.
Any, any place you guys see sidewalk, they need a sidewalk.
I was just wondering why we can't have that somehow to, I mean, where we have to run that sidewalk over to the walk-in trail that's already there to get away from the road?
Well, they're going to come up, if they're, if they're coming up from Westwood and all that to go to school, they're, they're, you know, they want to go straight up and go as quick as they can. I mean, the trail is close now, yeah, we, we're connected to the trail already there on, on Mr. McWhorter property.
Yeah, right.
But that takes you over here. You know, if they're, if they're walking to school. From the trail to get up to, to, yeah, North Lane, you're going to have to go up Denver Street. You got to go on up Denver or, or get on whatever that other road if they're going.
Get off of Zachary Park and take the deal. Just that trail over on Ben.
I mean, you can, it can be done, but it's just, it's just a narrative.
A lot of kids walking, they're walking from, from where, what's around.
Well, anything across Stensburg, if you're coming across Stensburg from, from Indian Hill, it's west.
They've got enough buses, two pills out there.
I don't know.
There are a lot of kids walking that ditch.
There are people on that hill for some reason.
One of them would get hit one day.
For sure.
Then I'll be on a walking trip.
And you'd be on sidewalk.
Or a bus.
If they went on the walking trail on White North Lane, I mean, it's, it's a little bit out of line with our whole.
We've got a crackless system, that does a good job.
You mean if they went on the, if they got on the trail there and came down here to say, oh, you know?
They'd be, they'd be. They could have Zachary Park, walked on sidewalk, well.
What I'm saying, yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, and you want, you want all that, you want all these sidewalks, you want them.
And that was the goal, reach every school, once that trail had reached every school, like originally.
Yeah.
That's someone.
Now, I would remind the other white council members, there's not a foot of sidewalk on the west side of town. How's your, what's it on the police station?
And that's another spot. I mean, I talked to Judge Hudson, you know, a year ago now, about going on the opposite side of the PD and getting, you know, incorporating there. And, and one, getting a sidewalk and cleaning up what the county themselves have literally just kept, it's just a mess there. Power, whatever that is there.
And I'm the biggest property owner up there and I've offered to go and do that and on that and on Cedar Street.
And I think, I think.
Needs to be a sidewalk down that street by the county over to where, you know, all those people walk from.
All homes.
All homes.
Ninety year.
Well, and in that sense too, they could come across.
Get stuck above our house and come down either way.
Yeah, all that needs sidewalk. And the judge was willing to, to visit with us about it and share costs, but he doesn't want to touch anything unless it's engineered. I mean, he's like, you got to get somebody to engineer this thing.
He should get somebody, we wouldn't have given a man in on that anger station.
But I think Denver needs to be looked at, I mean, it's.
People do a lot of things when you start withholding that permit in your project.
Anyway, Denver is a, is a letter or minority, whatever, you know, I think it needs that sidewalks on.
So, so you want to do the boxes like the, the bridges of a month, a month basis?
On the bridges?
On cost.
Yes, I'd like to, yeah. Thank you, sir.
Stay out of them about the sidewalk.
Yes, sir.
Will, you got anything? Do you? Nathan, Nathan? Come on. Again, welcome, and, and this is typical, usually it's 12:30, so. No, it's not.
It's usually 11:00.
Yeah. Yep, that's right. Councilmore.
I do appreciate them, y'all, on the additions, putting number 10, number 11, number 12 up there in the corner of that church house.
I did that this time because he's just.
Thank you, and I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I just appreciate the additions. Yeah, Tim, you said you'd kind of like to see 500. I'll try to work on that.
Well, we're going bigger about that next, you say we're going bigger than that next time?
Uh, I try to draw the circles.
I mean, ultimately, it probably should be zero, but because, and the reason I say that, and I agree with Lance to a certain extent, is you bring us what you want, where you want it, and then add the councils, whatever the word you kept using, we'll say, no, too close to a church or whatever. You shouldn't have to put the number down, we should be able to just say it's too close to them. It doesn't matter who's supplying for it, just where it's at. Now, we don't want to write that for that church.
The problem is that though, in my mind, is that if you say, no, you're too close to the church, and the next guy you say, nah, it's okay.
Well, let me.
You know, I mean, you get into, you get into that.
Some churches sell exceptions and whatever.
And let me suggest that, like we're here on the planning here, there's a variability, as we listen to the neighborhood, to the neighbors and so on, and if no one objects to the, the planning here, like they go ahead with it, neighbors would agree with it. And the idea about the church, not all churches, you know, for him, I mean.
I, that was not exactly what he said.
Put the legislation in there, then that bill that says where, just take Mr. Miles for example, he has to put them letters out to everybody around him and if they, you come back and, and, you know.
Put a, put a process for variation.
There's some of them that if they're going down the highway, they don't need to do all this because they're so far out there.
Well, they, they look at variation. But if the council says, if, if you walk in here and you have anything that does not meet the ordinance, there's a process for a variation.
Exactly. That's been going on for years.
Because that's going to be where you get your head locked off, is you gave him one and you didn't give him one.
If you don't have a rational basis for granting those.
And you heard her say many times, the words that lead into that. I mean, that's where you're headed.
But, I mean, right, but we're, no, maybe that every time we grant variants, you know.
It's the same principle. It's the same principle.
Yes, same principle.
Same principle. Just we got into that, there was a little bit of, we had a lot of beer and then all of a sudden we couldn't make it.
But, but you want to make your ordinance as close as you can get it so that, like, I mean, where this started months ago was if you want this to pass, you need to walk in here with a plan that meets the regulations.
But we also, months ago, we had several representatives from different churches and stuff up here saying that, that, you know, they didn't want some type of distance.
Yeah. From, from their church.
And they were all representing different churches.
But the people whose churches didn't like having smoking.
Right.
It, that idea of the Baptist speaking for the Episcopalians saying, we can't have alcohol served within a thousand feet of our church.
But that's not what, that's not what the ordinance reflects. That's, right now, that's not what it reflects. If the Episcopal church or Catholic church is there and they had no problem with it, they can send it across the street.
And that's ridiculous in your opinion. You have an opinion and it's bad, but I'm not saying it's wrong. But I have an opinion, my opinion's as important to me as yours is to yours. I wouldn't mind actually down the highway. I kind of like it somewhere, or whatever, TDF, I, whatever. But, I mean, Fort Smith, I mean, they've got higher ground, I mean, alcohol brings in problems. It has some good points, I drink, but it brings in problems.
Well, that's why, you know, if you go look at the regulations, which Mr. King, but today, there's a lot of regulations in there on purpose. You know?
It's at the lottery, it will bring in problems too, with your second, second city. I think your church is going to have more problems next door than our neighbor will at that restaurant.
I agree with you. I had more problems Sunday morning than from the next door neighbor, you know?
Now, he said that 98% of your church would vote for it. I say need 98% of your members to vote for it and give it to him.
That's right. I would, I would say, yeah, I'd go with that.
I don't know how it became my church.
Alabama just one.
Right.
Alabama just one?
Yes. Twenty six.
State of the right.
George, he took a fifty-one yard field goal on my air. Sixty minutes.
All right, I was, uh, anything else from council?
We're in the game, bro, let's keep talking.
Well, what I look at this is, this is a process and, and we made initial step. It doesn't mean that, you know, through three years now, it's going to be a minute next somebody, you know, I'm thinking. We, we made a step and we, we've done our best to outline it. And doesn't mean that it's not going to be changed and, and like I said.
It's going to be a little point.
I think, I just think that you have to view the distances in the same kind of mindset that you view zoning and planning.
Well, what about a pharmacy that's going to be distributed marijuana?
I think you're going to have to deal with that, same one.
We'll have to deal with it when it comes down. I don't think, I mean, when the state's definitely wanted it, we may not have to deal with money.
My opinion, the state's going to totally allow that. We don't want to deal for as far as the city. You just leave yourself a dry county and don't even mess with it because I'm telling you, when the feds start, when the feds start coming in and shutting all that stuff down, they're going to come right back to the city government to approve all that junk.
Right.
Because they can't anytime they want to. All you got to do is make one federal judgment, it's all over.
When you talk about churches, you have a brother that goes to one church that's affected, and I don't think he shares your opinion.
Oh, no.
And you have a dad and a mother that goes to another church that's affected, and I don't think they share your opinion.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So, I mean, they're constituents of mine as well as you are. So we have different groups. And just in your family, the majority of your family would prefer my ordinance be very restricted, extremely restricted.
I'll hold it very restricted.
But the, the point here is, what is the rational basis for that restriction, for their objection? They have religious objections to alcohol purely.
Right. And I have their permission to restrict the alcohol.
So they'll disprove it anyway, based on their religious. It's not the city council's job to protect the religious beliefs of individuals. You know, or to keep them from being offended. Again, I grew up in a church Baptist, I grew up First Baptist, and it was preached that both that cigarettes were evil. Are we going to restrict the cigarettes being sold within somebody in the church?
But you are the funding commission, protect my property.
And we, and we use the rational basis. And we, and we use the rational basis of the American Planning Association and generations of guidelines on how you can plan cities and all those basis. We're not enforcing religious beliefs.
I don't believe I'm enforcing religious beliefs of the AA or the NA groups or the daycare groups.
I don't know why you're putting those in. Personally, I, I mean, the state doesn't consider that.
The state puts it in for churches?
And schools.
And schools.
That's it. For packaged liquors for us, period.
So why do they put it in?
Because they, one, capitulate to the religious groups and, B, going along with these liquor wholesalers to maintain their monotonies.
Okay, I want you to literally understand one thing. I'm against alcohol being sold to the stand. It's 100% not on religious grounds.
Now, that's fine.
So it's a experience I had, you know, people getting killed, I've assaulted twice with drugs. I mean, I had to puke down on the drugstore one time up here.
I spent 22 years up there.
I mean, I had 22, and you were in line, military intelligence?
In operations.
And I was a combat engineer who had about IQ of 95 if you're lucky, and they drink like, no, I mean, I just...
I have two distinct...
Don't think they, it's all the same.
You know, you're making...
We can go.
Yeah, you guys...
I'd motion to adjourn.
Let me make something, make a point real quick, too. It's not, it's not alcohol at all. It's actually about Chief Sir Brian's wife, dad who passed away. You probably all know that. I think Tammy sent out an email to most of you. But just keep that in your prayers. Sir was back in town today, working a little bit and then taking care of some business with the family. If they lost, again, Jessica lost her dad, so please remember those folks in your prayer. I think they're going to have just a great sight. Oh, yeah, it's kind of worth your remission service. So, but anyway. Sorry?
Week from Saturday.
Week from Saturday, okay. So remember those folks. Appreciate everything tonight, everybody. Very civil and, you know, go on, count us. So I would entertain your motion to adjourn.
My motion, thanks.
Your pleasure.
Thank you.